Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education General Meeting of March 21st, 2016. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Yes. Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the meeting this evening. As you can see, we have a full house and a lot of exciting things to celebrate. If you would like an agenda, they can be found if you're visiting with us this evening, they can be found on the table just outside the door. If you're watching from home, agendas can be found on our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop right down to our agendas and follow along from home if you'd like. This evening is a voting meeting. There are three different types of meetings that the School Board conducts generally. We have study sessions, which are first brushes at items that may be coming before the Board. We have Committee of the Whole meetings, in which we go into great depth and ask a lot of questions and answers and do a lot of beating issues around the table. And then we get them ready to come to what we have tonight, which is a voting meeting or a general meeting. So the topics that we're voting on this evening may not have what you would expect to see the depth of discussion going on. Please understand that that's not because we're brushing them over or taking them lightly. Typically, it's because we've been discussing them for at least three meetings now, and there simply are not that many questions left to ask. I do, however, encourage you to follow along with our Committee of the Whole meetings. They are frankly my favorite meeting in terms of depths of issues. If you're looking to get into the nitty-gritty of the Board business, those are very interesting meetings to follow along with. You could either attend them personally, or you can tune in on television, either one. The most celebratory meetings are those that we're having tonight, when we have a whole lot of communications items and a lot of folks and accomplishments to celebrate. So these are a lot of fun to attend also. If you're following along on our agenda, we're going to have a break after some of our honorees are recognized this evening. After Item 3E, we will have a break for about five or 10 minutes so that we can congratulate our honorees, take a little bit of a break. Those student artists who have art on display here can come up and take some pictures if they'd like. Our parents usually taught us that it's rude to get up and walk out of a meeting. In this case, after 3E, if you'd like to exit, it's not considered rude. If you'd like to hang around and watch the rest of the Board business, you are more than welcome. We are happy to have you, but if your schedule dictates that you have other things to take care of this evening, that may be a good time to do so. Let's see here. Next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3 Communications. And Mrs. Jenkins, we have several exciting things this evening.
Yes, we do. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Mrs. Elquith. Tonight, we continue with our monthly Student Art Gallery program. Can you hear me okay? Does it sound good? Okay, I can. Where we recognize five student artists who have been selected by their art teacher to represent the art department at their school. This month, we are featuring the works of five very talented students from Holmes Middle School, as you can see. Very talented. Their work represents a snapshot of many beautifully creative pieces by Holmes Middle School students, under the direction of art teacher Joan Haber, who has joined us this evening. Thanks for coming. Each student tonight will receive this certificate. I always like to read these. Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Holmes Middle School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, March 21st, 2016. I should mention, these are signed by our superintendent. That's kind of neat. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce you to the following artists from Holmes. First, we have Leo Greco. Leo is an eighth grader. Come on up, Leo. There you are.
And parents, if you'd like to get photographs of your student receiving their award, feel free to do so.
Yeah, go ahead. And Leo, we have, Mrs. Haber has grouped the pieces for the sake of the audience. Can you just kind of point to which pieces are yours?
Yeah, it's the bone pin one, under my name.
Okay.
And then to the left, it's the tools, and then it's the boxes and shapes.
Okay. Are those pencil drawings, all three?
Um, yeah.
Okay, very nice, very nice. And I'll have you stay up here if you don't want to get anyone up. Then we'll give a big round of applause for all of you. Next, we have Grace Kirkpatrick, and Grace is an eighth grader. Hi, Grace. You have a long walk up here, don't you? There you go. And which pieces are yours?
Mine are to the very right. I have the cupcake, and then I have the flower one, and the boat.
Okay, very neat. Very nice. Next, we have Megan Lakatos. Megan is an eighth grader. Hope I pronounced that correctly. There you are, Megan. And which pieces are yours?
The yellow frosted cupcake, the four hearts, and the letter M.
Okay, we've got some 3D pieces up there as well. Very nice. Next, we have Jenna Millis. Jenna is a seventh grader. There you go, Jenna. Which pieces are yours? Come on up.
I have the bowling pin piece with the two bottles, and the 3D one, it's kind of a spider web, and the Dora one with the yellow background.
Wow, very neat. And last but not least, Juliana Williams. Juliana is an eighth grader. There you are. And which pieces are yours? It's the process of deduction, we should figure this out.
Mine's my self-portrait over there.
Okay.
And then right to, it's my shapes thing that I did. And under it, it's my giraffe going neck going through shapes.
Oh, wow, okay. See that? Very nice. Won't you join me in congratulating the very talented artists? For allowing us to have your work here on display for about the next month. I promise we'll return it safely to you, okay? Thank you again. And also, be sure to stop by the kiosk in the lobby, in the Board Office lobby here. There's some fantastic pieces by Churchill High School art students, under the direction of Janet Stack and Tracy Altman. Okay? Thank you.
I have to mention too, all three of my kids had the pleasure of having Joan Haber as their art teacher at various times. They weren't all middle school, they were all around. And in digging through all of our Easter decorations and getting them out a couple of weekends ago, when my daughter was home, she came upon a book that, Joan, you'll probably remember, a several-page-long book that was basically a lot of projects all put together. She pulled it out of the box and said, "Oh, Mrs. Haber was the bomb! She was so cool!" Anyway, she's, many years later, they still remember so many of their teachers, and it's just a neat thing to be able to pass on.
That's neat.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3B, which is our Golden Apple Award. Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present a Golden Apple Award to a very special parent volunteer in our schools. As you know, the Golden Apple Award recognizes those in our district who go above and beyond for our students, school, district, and community by giving generously of their time and talents. Our schools are so incredibly fortunate to have the dedicated support of parent volunteers who assist our staff with everything from organizing special programs and events for our students, to offering a helping hand in our classrooms, or manning the welcome table each morning at our school lobbies, in our school lobbies. These tasks and many more are the reason we are so grateful to have parents become such a part of the fabric of our schools. At this time, I would like to introduce you to one of those special dedicated parents. If I could ask Mrs. Terry Rentes to join me at the podium. And we'll applaud Terry. I should come down up here. Thanks for bearing with us on this. She's not a fan of being at the podium, but we'll make it very easy and comfortable for her. So, Terry, by bragging about you, I hope that's okay. Terry Rentes is a longtime PTA member and volunteer in our schools. She was nominated by Riley Upper Elementary PTA President and music teacher, I must add. Melody Proventure, Melody's in the audience with us this evening. Terry is the mother of two girls, Emily and Ally, who I believe are also here. Girls, aye? They attend Holmes and Riley. Terry is described as a super-kind person, who over the past four years, has gone above and beyond to support PTA activities at Riley. She works the welcome table and serves as the messenger when parents drop off those forgotten items, such as lunches, backpacks, or musical instruments. She makes sure that the students who forgot that one important item for the school day receives it. Ask any staff member at any school, and they'll tell you, that kind of support for those little things really means the world. She assists the PTA membership, she assists with PTA membership, the Holiday Shop, the good old Box Tops for Education program, staff appreciation, pizza pop and paperbacks, and much more. Marjorie Moore, who is acting principal at Riley, had this to say about Mrs. Rentes. Terry is an unsung hero, a quiet worker behind the scenes. She does not desire the spotlight or seek recognition, which makes this Golden Apple more of something that we want for her. She simply steps in wherever she's needed, willingly giving up her time and talents to help our school be the best that we can be. Although this Golden Apple nomination came in from Riley, it should be noted that Mrs. Rentes also volunteers quite a bit at Cass Elementary, even though her daughters have long since graduated. She says she can't seem to stay away. She works with Mrs. Stromberg's kindergarten class, where she gets just as much out of it as the parent and as the students and the teacher. She says when she's having somewhat of a bad day, spending time in a kindergarten class is the best cure. I've always heard that myself. When you're feeling a little down, go back to kindergarten. At this time, I'd like to invite Trustee Liz Jarvis to join us, who will, and Trustee Jarvis is going to present the Golden Apple.
Feeling uncomfortable yet?
Yes.
I've had the pleasure of knowing Terry for many years, and I just am so proud to be able to offer you this wonderful plaque that says, "We proudly present to you a Golden Apple." A long overdue one. On the back, there's a little pin, because sometimes it's hard to carry the plaque around with you. But we want everyone to know how special you are, so wear the pin proudly. And just a couple of other comments. In the nomination form, some of the comments that were made, because you're not really red enough yet. "Mrs. Rentes is a parent volunteer who can always be counted on to get the job done. When her name is attached to an event or a project, it's to be sure to be completed in the most thorough way. She goes above and beyond in any task she faces. She always sees the best in LPS. Mrs. Rentes is a get-down-to-work type of person who never seeks accolades for her own work." Mrs. Proventure, who nominated her, mentioned that Mrs. Rentes is a super-kind person who, over the last four years, has gone above and beyond to support PTA activities at Riley Upper Elementary. And as PTA President at Riley, she's very proud to say that she has worked with you. I'm proud to say that too. You are absolutely a top-notch, roll-up-your-sleeves kind of person. Congratulations.
Thank you. I knew she was going to get away without saying anything. She truly is grateful.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3C, Recognition of Wrestling State Championship. Nathan, and I'm not going to pronounce, Etienza, from Franklin High School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Franklin High School wrestler Nathan Etienza for capturing the MHSAA Division One Wrestling State Championship in the 145-pound class.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Mrs. Jenkins, you have more celebration stuff with us.
Hey, yes, thank you, President Burton. It's that time of the year when we get to add a little bit of excitement to our agendas. We have more coming next month, too.
Keep it coming.
Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce one of our 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association state champions. We're recognizing the tremendous efforts of Franklin varsity wrestler Nathan Etienza, who captured the state championship in the 145-pound weight class at the Palace of Auburn Hills earlier this month, making him the second state champ wrestler in the history of Franklin High School, and the second state champ wrestler in the history of his immediate family.
Wow.
Yes! If the name Etienza rings a bell, it's because we were here two years ago, recognizing Nathan's brother, Jordan, on his state wrestling title. How cool is that? At this time, I'd like to ask Nathan to join us at the podium, and also his coach, Dave Chiola, to join me at the podium. Also, we have Trustee Mark Johnson, who also will join us at our little party up here at the podium. And he will read a resolution that we prepared for Nathan.
First, I want to, it's my great pleasure, Nathan, to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Those must have been some fights at home. I'll betcha. You know, just to give you some idea, if anybody knows wrestling at all, you've got to wonder what kind of a feat it is to win 58 straight matches.
Wow.
That's incredible.
It's amazing.
To go the entire... I thought I'd wrestle him for this resolution, but I'd lose. Let me go ahead and read that. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district, and whereas Nathan Etienza, a junior at Franklin High School, has distinguished himself by achieving the 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One State Championship in the 145-pound class. Whereas in achieving this honor, Nathan exceeded 150 career wins, and has a perfect 58-0 season, distinguishing himself as the first undefeated wrestler in the history of Franklin High School. Whereas this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Nathan has achieved as a Franklin High School wrestler, including being a three-time city champion, Wayne County champion, three-time Observerland champion, two-time KLAa champion, three-time All-Area, three-time Scholar-Athlete, and the first three-time All-State wrestler in Franklin history. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Nathan Etienza for his outstanding accomplishments in athletics, and wish him well in his future endeavors, as he applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of his life. Nathan?
Congratulations.
Just want to say a few words about Nathan. Perfect, perfection is what we strive for our athletes and our students, but so hard to achieve. I've been coaching 33 years, and he is my first undefeated wrestler, so that's how difficult it is. And sometimes when it's that easy, or looks that easy, you don't see the hard work that goes into it. He got a 42-second pin in the final match, which is a record for juniors in the state of Michigan for all time. And people see that, they just think, "Oh, he's just a natural," but the hard work that went in is incredible, and sometimes that's not seen. Just coming in as a freshman on the heels of his brother, he was always compared. In fact, if I had a dollar for every time somebody asked me who was better, I mean, I wouldn't need a raise. But that didn't slow him down. He became the first All-State wrestler as a freshman. He followed that up as a sophomore, not only getting to the state finals and eventually losing, but he had to be captain as a sophomore, too, which, you know, we had juniors and seniors on the team, but he was a natural leader, and he took over the team. To come back his junior year, all the way back to the state finals after being there the year before and losing, the resiliency that takes is something that I don't think a lot of us can understand. To do it undefeated, and it's not like he was dodging competition. We were bumping him up to 152, wherever we had to go. Whoever the best kid on the other team was, we would wrestle them with Nathan, knowing that, you know, he was up for the challenge, and he wasn't trying to keep his record perfect. He was trying to get the best competition. So to do all that, and then come away undefeated and a pin in the finals, he gives himself a hard act to follow next year, but he's the guy that can follow it and probably, you know, rise to the top, so I want to congratulate him.
I would just like to thank my coach and family for all the opportunities they've given me and all the sacrifices they've made for me. It's been a long season, but I can't wait to do it again next year.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's phenomenal.
We're going to be watching with interest next year.
We're expecting 40 seconds next year.
And congratulations not only to Nathan, but to his very proud coach and his very proud mom. We can spot the parents in the crowd pretty easily. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D, Peer Connections. Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we have an update from Mary McFarland, who heads up our peer programs in the district. She's developed a program called Peer Connections, which provides peer-to-peer support and positive relationship building between students with and without disabilities. I didn't want to say too much, because she would love to tell you all about it, so with that, I'd love to turn it over to Mary, who's sitting nearby here.
Good evening, everyone. It's such a pleasure to be here and share a bit about the peer support program called Peer Connections. We've implemented this over the past three years within LPS. And Peer Connections is currently being offered at Frost Middle School and Churchill High School for elective credit. The course is designed for students to provide ongoing support and modeling for peers with special needs. And students who participate in Peer Connections learn to relate to individuals with different needs, and they also develop an increased understanding of individual differences. So it also has a positive behavioral support across the entire school, which is wonderful, a wonderful outcome. There's a broad research base in support of peer programs, as they do promote generalization of social skills from the learning environment to other locations throughout the school, other social situations, and with other individuals. And that's something that's very difficult to accomplish with students with special needs. Peer models, they basically model typical academic and social behavior in educational environments and throughout the school day. So in that way, they provide support for students with autism spectrum disorders and other social skills deficits, and this helps to promote independence and socialization for those students. We've also incorporated another evidence-based practice called video modeling within the Peer Connections program. And I kind of joke about it, but we have basically a built, we have the built-in peers who can then be the models for the video models that we create, and then there's the opportunity for immediate practice within the peer program. So it's just been a win-win. And additionally, a huge benefit as an in-service program and in developing character and a lot of other positive qualities for the general ed students, the typical peers who participate. There's a number of, it supports inclusion of students with autism and special needs, and affects their future post-secondary outcomes. And we've also just observed numerous positive outcomes between the two classes that we currently have going at Frost and Churchill, and we just look forward to sharing more as the course enrollment continues to increase. We've seen a lot of students, more than ever, enroll for the coming fall, and we're just happy to update you today and keep you updated as things continue on in a positive way for Peer Connections.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
Thank you.
No? Ari? Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation this evening. The next item on our agenda is Item 3E, Read Across Amer, I'm sorry, Read Across America Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution and recognition of Read Across America during the month of March 2016.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you once again, President Burton. Celebrating March's Reading Month is always so much fun in our schools, particularly at our elementary schools where activities abound, something is going on every single day. It's sort of like high school homecoming spirit week during the month of March. It's not unusual to see teachers wearing tall, red and white striped hats around in the hallways, or parents cuddling up with their students for early morning all-school read-ins. There are special activities, such as guest reader days, and even a Battle of the Books event. Actually, there's one happening tomorrow evening at Cooper. Let's see, my son's in it, that's why he was just off the top of my head. I'm thrown off. Anyway, there's so many activities that are centered around reading that take place throughout the month of March. Tonight, we're celebrating March's Reading Month by designating March 2nd, 2016, which is Dr. Seuss's birthday. We're designating that day as Read Across America Day, as declared by the National Education Association. Supporting this designation is the Livonia Education Association, and I would love to ask LEA President Priscilla David to join me at the podium, along with Board Secretary Diane Laura, who will read a resolution that we've prepared, and present that resolution
Ms. Davis, I'm very honored to present the Read Across America Resolution to you. And if I could take a minute just to read it first, okay? Whereas citizens of the Livonia Public Schools School District stand firmly committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And, whereas Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's 112th birthday on March 2nd, 2016, is sponsored by the Livonia Education Association in cooperation with the National Education Association, and promotes reading and adult involvement in education of our community students. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District call upon their citizens to assure that every child is reading together with a caring adult throughout the month of March, celebrated today, March 21st, 2016, with the Livonia Public School Board of Education. And be it further resolved that this body re-commits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. And on behalf of the Board, I would like to present you with the resolution, and thank you for your commitment and LEA involvement in promoting the importance of reading in all the lives of our children. So thank you. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the Livonia Education Association, I would like to express our support for the Read Across America Resolution before the School Board. Before I took my very first flight on an airplane, it was the books I had read that prepared me for what I might find when I took my very first teaching job in South Carolina. Friendship with Joe March and Louisa Mae Alcott's books opened my eyes to a wealth of life choices, and my appreciation for diverse cultures and their histories was honed over the years as I traveled through time, engrossed in historical fiction from all... as I traveled through time, engrossed in historical fiction from all corners of the world. So we encourage all our LPS parents to take your child on an adventure, share a good belly laugh, marvel at the artistic beauty of the world around us, enjoy animals at play, even test a scientific theory, all without ever leaving the confines of your home. Simply read and enjoy a book together. Thank you.
We are going to take a brief recess. Oh, I'm sorry. You have to vote on that, don't we? Almost forgot. Excuse me. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any comments or questions from the members of the board? All righty. Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take our break. We'll be at recess for the next five to 10 minutes or so, so that we can congratulate our honorees this evening. Those of you who would like some photographs, feel free to come up to the front and take care of that. We are at recess. Welcome back to the continuation of the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, March 21, 2016. If you are following along on your agenda at home, we are at Item 3F, Written Communications. Do any members of the Board of Education have written communications they would like to share? No? All righty, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is Item 3G, Audience Communications. Just as a way of explanation, the Board of Education has three primary roles. The first role is to hire and evaluate our superintendent. We are thrilled to have successfully accomplished that this year and have a fabulous superintendent in Mrs. Oakwist. We're happy to have that task behind us. And the ongoing evaluation of our superintendent is something that this Board takes very seriously. A second role of the Board of Education is to create policy and revise policy for the district. That is another ongoing, very high priority for our Board of Education. The third area of responsibility is strategic planning, long-term planning for the district, and aligning our budget to those goals. Those are the governance roles of our Board of Education. All of the day-to-day operations of the district, the responsibility for those rests with Mrs. Oakwist as our superintendent and all of our administration and staff in the district. Therefore, as you're approaching the Board of Education with audience communications, understand that it is not a question-and-answer type time, but it's a time for the Board, that the Board has set aside, that we can listen to anyone who would like to approach the Board. Your response will come in the form of, from the Board of Education itself, if your concern addresses the policy, the superintendent, or the strategic planning and budget portion of our work. If your concerns lie more with the day-to-day operations, understand that your response is going to come more from our superintendent, who's responsible for those operations. And the Board is kept abreast of all communication back and forth with any audience communication. Our audience communication time, we have asked that everybody honor the three-minute limit per person, and that is so that everybody can have a fair opportunity to have their concerns addressed. We do have a timer that Mr. Johnson will take care of for us. We've just found that that's a little bit more polite way rather than being interrupted. So if you hear a timer going off, you'll know that you need to wrap up your comments. Let's see here. Our first speaker who would like to address the audience is Emily Heiser. Emily?
Good evening. Hello, members of the Board. This January marked the beginning of my fourth year teaching in Livonia Public Schools. I teach 5th and 6th grade in the local center, working mostly with students that have emotional impairments or on the autism spectrum, which is evidenced by my bruise I have forming on my face today. I am part of committees for the district and county for the Common Core Essential Elements and have presented at District Professional Development. I'm finishing up my master's degree in Special Education, which will give me three endorsements on my elementary teaching certificate. And my graduate work has been presented at the Council for Exceptional Children. I've had the pleasure of working at three buildings with staff that I enjoy and consider to be my friends. I love the team of people that I work with, and I'm constantly amazed by how generous and giving the people that I work with every day are. I can honestly say that I enjoy coming into work every day and consider myself lucky to say that I love my job. My first two years in the district, I worked my part-time job as a pool supervisor on nights and weekends. Taking grad classes in the evening now prevent me from doing that, but I still work at the pool in the summers to help supplement my income. Lifeguards make fun of me around mid-July because I start dragging all of my teaching materials to the pool, and I beg them to help me cut everything out to get ready for the beginning of the school year. I also teach extended school year in the summer, which helps pay for some of the materials to start up my classroom each year. Last summer, I made the decision to move out of my tiny one-bedroom apartment, but I was not upgrading. I am now renting a room from my friend. It was too expensive to live by myself and try to cover student loans and other bills because my teacher's salary does not cover all of my expenses. To sum all of this up, I love my job, but I cannot afford my job. This winter, I came to the conclusion that this school year could be my last as a teacher in Livonia Public Schools, which really breaks my heart. I'm considering looking for a new job, where I'm recognized for my commitment, my education, and the time I put into my career. The District of Livonia would not only be losing a teacher, but a resident. I'm asking the Board what their vision for the future of LPS is. As more seasoned teachers continue to retire, who will you leave charged with your schools and your children? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Jennifer Anjuzak.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Anjuzak, and I have a son that attends the ECP program at Jackson Center. I have three questions regarding all of the early childhood education programs, the infant, the toddler, preschool, and the ECP programs housed at Jackson Center. First is how do the early childhood education programs in Livonia fit into the School Board's current and future strategic plans for Livonia Public Schools? Second, when can we expect the results and what were the results of the enrollment projection study and the building utilization assessment pertaining to Livonia Public Schools' early childhood education programs, not only at Jackson but just everywhere? And has the School Board and/or Superintendent Oakwist considered getting the early childhood education programs in Livonia accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children? There are only 124 programs in the entire state of Michigan that have this special accreditation. Could be a selling feature for people to move to Livonia or send their children to the programs offered at Jackson Center. I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Oakwist, can you please get back with Mrs. Anjuzak on the answers and copy the board also?
Certainly.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Wozniak.
Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, and Superintendent Oakwist. My name is Courtney Wozniak. I teach at Jackson Center in the ECP program. Just last week, I celebrated my six-year anniversary with the district. When I was hired, I understood that the beginning pay for teachers might be relatively low. But like other teachers working under a teacher's salary step system, I thought that as I gained experience, I would also be rewarded with a slightly higher salary each year. Unfortunately, that has not been the case, as I am currently on step one of the pay scale. Over the past six years, I have taught in a 5th and 6th grade resource room at Cooper, taught at the Western Wayne Skill Center, where I developed my own curriculum, I took over the Mokai preschool classroom at Webster, and am now teaching in a cross-categorical preschool classroom at Jackson Center. Also, in the last six years, I have changed buildings or positions six times. With each change, there has been more that I've had to invest financially in my classrooms, which at times has been very costly. I have also continued my education, and in December, earned my master's degree in learning disabilities. Throughout each of these various teaching experiences and schooling, I have gained a lot of knowledge and improved immensely as a teacher. Three and a half years ago, my husband and I were very excited when we purchased our first home in Livonia, as we both grew up here. We hope to raise a family here in the future. However, we are very concerned with our future and the future of Livonia Public Schools. We worry that if my pay continues to stagnate, we won't be able to afford to raise a family. We also worry about the teachers that our future children will have, and if they will be as invested in our students the way the current teachers are. By slowing the pay scale so much, what type of teachers will we be attracting to the district in the future? When my husband recently lost his job, we're very afraid because my salary alone at step one is not enough to pay our bills. Thankfully, he quickly found another job, but we continue to worry about paying our student loan payments, among other bills. Just recently, I even took on a second job to help us out. I love what I do, and I would not want to change it ever, but I worry that if my pay continues to stagnate, I may not be able to afford to continue doing what I truly love. Thank you for your time.
Our next speakers are Maya Castiano and Joey Galinski.
Good evening, members of the School Board. My name is Joey Galinski. I am in the 10th grade at Stevenson High School, and I am a member of the Livonia Warriors' First Robotics Team.
Hi, my name is Maya Constantino. I'm in the 11th grade at Stevenson High School, and I am a member of the Livonia Warriors' First Robotics Team.
During the past month, the construction of our robot Draco was finished. We competed with Draco in Southfield and had a blast. We won two safety awards, which is a pretty big deal. This Friday and Saturday, the Livonia Warriors will host a First Robotics Competition at Churchill High School. There will be about 40 teams competing, bringing their robots from all across Michigan. This year's game is called Stronghold, and it is a medieval siege battle with towers, drawbridges, and other obstacles to conquer. It is hard to describe the high-energy atmosphere or how exciting it is to watch the games. Our team is inviting everyone to come to Churchill and watch the tournaments. Admission is free. Bring a camera and stay for as long as you want. The opening ceremonies will be on Friday at 10:30 a.m. Bouts will run all day, Friday and Saturday. Come cheer us on. Draco invictus. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is John Grisbeck.
Thank you, President Burton, members of the Board. I realize I did this before, but I wanted to do it again. I wanted everybody to go to livonyptsacouncil.org and go to the Our Work tab and drop down to Advocacy and Legislative. You'll be able to contact the five legislators that represent Livonia Public Schools, and I suggest you do so. We've had several speakers come to you, and they're from one of our most, you know, very precious resources, and it's in our employee groups. And I understand their concerns, and I want to learn more about that, too, some of the issues that are coming before you the last couple of weeks. But I want people, again, livonyptsacouncil.org, Our Work tab, and Advocacy and Legislative, and you'll find your contact information for your legislators. I also, I had a school improvement team meeting about two weeks ago, and it's nice to see that good things are still going on in this district, and I know they'll continue regardless of the funding nightmare in Lansing. As a state PTA Board member, I have raffle tickets, and they're $10 apiece. My phone number is 734-422-6186. And if you win, it's a Mackinac Island stay in the hotel there. So if anybody's interested in that, I would be happy to do that. Another thing that's coming up soon, on the 15th and 16th, is the PTA Convention in Lansing. So you can find information on, well, actually, it's the Michigan PTA. You would find that information there. So I hope people can attend. You can talk to your local PTA president if you want any more information. And I was just representing myself this evening, no particular group. I do have to go. I'm going to watch the rest of the TV, or the meeting on TV. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our presenters this evening. The next item on our agenda is Item 3H, Response to Prior Communications. I do not have response at this time. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 4a, minutes of the regular meeting of February 8, 2016. 4b, minutes of the special meeting of February 22, 2016. 4c, minutes of the closed session of February 22, 2016. 4d, minutes of the special meeting of March 7, 2016. 5a, bills for payment, March 22, 2016.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Oakwist? Wait, I'm sorry. No, we don't need addressing on this item. The consent agenda items are items that typically regularly come before the Board of Education. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items by members of the Board?
Just pass them. Pass in our minutes.
All righty. Anybody else has closed session minutes? If you can pass them.
We got them here from this end.
Passing down to Mrs. Wozniak.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item 5b, Adoption of the 2015-2016 Second Budget Amendments. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached amended budgets for the 2015-16 school year. General Fund, Special Education Fund, Debt Retirement Fund 2013 Bond Series 1, Debt Retirement Fund 2014 Refunding Bond, 2013 Bond Series 1 Fund, 2013 Bond Series 2 Fund, Building and Site Technology Fund, Sinking Fund Capital Projects, Food Service Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Athletic Fund, Scholarship Fund, and Funded Projects Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. David, would you like to address this item for us?
I would. Thank you very much. First of all, that was an excellent job on all of those funds, getting through those. Nice job. As we do every year, we do bring to the Board of Education throughout the school year our most current and up-to-date estimates and projections for our budget. We have had an opportunity at our committee meeting and a study session to look at this in detail. You'll recall, of course, we brought to the Board of Education the overall detail on the Second Budget Amendment. We had an opportunity to go through that in detail at our committee meeting. Since that time, we've also provided to the Board of Education the very large Second Amendment Budget Book. If you've had an opportunity to look, about the first 25 pages are detail on the General Fund alone, so starting with the big picture, the resolution, and then going down to detail by actual function level, and then breaking that out by salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, et cetera. So all of that detail, as well as the backup resolutions for all of the other funds that you'll be adopting this evening as well. So I think we've had an opportunity to have a look at that. This is really nothing new from what we've done in the past. Again, we adopt our budget in May or June, and we have an opportunity in the fall to update that with the most current information. Typically, enrollment and staffing are the biggest changes in our fall amendment. And then updated projections typically in this March amendment. And then we will bring a final amendment to the Board of Education in June. And then the process, of course, is as we close our books, June 30, we bring the final actual costs. final actual costs and revenues to the Board of Education as we finalize our financial statements in the late summer or early fall. So it's about a 15-month process altogether as we look at a budget fiscal year. So again, this evening, we would like to present this. We do have a PowerPoint slide available, which you also have on your desk this evening. And first slide, of course, is the overall big picture on the budget amendment, which is really hard to see on the TV, which is why you have it in front of you this evening, but we do have it at home for our community members. We're looking at the second column. What we're asking the Board to adopt today is the Second Amendment. Beginning fund balance of almost $4.3 million, revenues of $144.8 million, expenditures of $144.9 million, or a net deficit of $167,000 in this amendment, with an ending fund balance of $4.1 million. This is an overall change from our first budget amendment of almost $2.4 million to the good. And we'll go through that detail in just a second. You can see, we've also included the fund balance as a percentage of revenues, which is how the state looks at fund balance percentage. And that is at 2.85%, excuse me, up a little bit, but still significantly well below the 5% that the state of Michigan is determining what an early warning district would look like. So that's not necessarily even a recommendation. And we've certainly heard our auditors say 10%, 15%, but that is, 5% is the number that the state is determining early warning districts. With that, we are still pleased to be presenting some good news this evening. On the second page, we'll look a little bit more in detail on what those changes were. Again, this is something we had an opportunity to go through in much more detail at our study session and our committee meeting. The revenue changes are a total of about $3.3 million. The bulk of that really is in the UAAL or 147C or Retirement Stabilization Funds that we receive directly from the state of Michigan. This is one of those items that has been difficult to nail down in our first budget amendment, just because it's based on prior year revenue, salaries, and the amount that we have to go to all our different funds, any of our funds that have salaries in them. So what actually affects the general fund? This should be a fairly stable number. It might change a little bit at the final amendment, but we do have a pretty good number at this point in the year. So again, that retirement stabilization will be offset by expenditures as well. This is the amount of money that we get from the state to pay the unfunded liability for retirement, turn around and write a check to the state of Michigan for the same amount. So this is a retirement stabilization, almost $2.2 million. We do have this one-time revenue source from Wayne County, which we were just notified of in February for $856,000. We're very pleased that this is actually a reimbursement for special ed transportation costs from the Wayne County Act 18 program. As we mentioned, this year it is a one-time revenue. We're hoping to influence that we can persuade them that might be more than a one-time revenue. You'll recall that they are making this distribution as the Act 18 fund overall countywide is performing better than they had anticipated. Mostly, this is a result, not so much property taxes increasing that quickly, although they are beginning to stabilize and increase slightly, more a result of some of the restrictions they've put on in the expenditures in that program. They're starting to see the results of that. So as we've seen here, some of the reductions in the Act 18 program, resources we've had for those students, some because we're spending less in that program, the resources are starting to increase the fund balance. So they did make that distribution this year. So we are appreciative of that. Our state aid at risk funds will be spending a little bit more than we had anticipated by $200,000, so we have that revenue source as well. Other changes, about $45,000 for a total of the $3.3 million changes in revenues. Next slide details the expenditure changes. Again, the retirement stabilization increases by $1.5 million. Again, that's when the money's going back out. And then we did make some adjustments on some of our line items that we see changes in this mid-year. Our tax refunds, these are the amount that we have to repay taxpayers. Salary and benefit adjustments, separate from the stabilization. That $116,000 net change is on about $130 million of salary and benefits. Utilities, we've reduced by $205,000. Transportation, the fuel for transportation, a little over $230,000. And other changes for a total of $903,000 increase. And again, the bulk of that is really the retirement stabilization. On the tax refunds, utilities, and transportation, I mentioned in our committee meeting that I was a little bit conservative at the time that we were putting the numbers together. You know, still a little bit uncertain with the weather. I think we'll see a favorable adjustment in June as well on those line items, just because the weather has been obviously very favorable, very little snow removal required, very little overtime, and fuel prices continue to stay pretty steady. Bounce a little bit, but they've been pretty steady. So I would expect we might see some small changes to make those a little bit closer to budget as well. I think they'll come in a little bit better at the end of the year as well. So again, total changes in expenditures of $903,000. So that explains the overall net changes for this budget. We've also included all the other funds. I did want to just note, there is one new fund, the 2013 Bond Series 2. You'll recall, we sold those $87 million of bond funds at the end of February very favorably. So we are including that budget going forward as well. There'll be a separate accounting for the two different bond funds. First series sold in June of 2013, second series sold in February of 2016. So you'll see that accounting as we go forward separately for those two funds. Other than that, the other funds are fairly straightforward without any significant or material changes. And we would recommend that we adopt the budget and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
I just wanted to, we don't often speak about the RISA Board and the superintendent there, but of course, Dr. Rainey Leepa is very familiar to us. But I would like to recognize their board for, they, I got to speak to a couple of members just a couple nights ago, and they really recognize the financial hardships that Wayne County districts are having. So I know they're working really hard to try to provide us budget relief forever. It's very appreciated, so if they're happy to be watching, thank you.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the board? And, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonfield, go ahead.
Mrs. Abby, I'm looking at this and you're telling us that as an early warning district that we really should be at 5%. And right now, with the current budget amendment, we're at 2.85%. So we really, by state standards, should be coming up with another $4 million in reductions to our budgets in order to maintain what the state concludes is a minimum fund balance.
That's correct. Okay. That is their recommendation that, well, not their recommendation, that's their standard. That's Treasury standard that we be at 5%.
Okay. And can I ask another?
Go right ahead.
Okay. And so when I look at the amendment number one, I'm seeing that we are at a deficit of $2.6 million and that eats into our fund balance. And so I understand that we are not considered a deficit district as long as we have fund balance in our pocket, so to speak. And from my experience, it seems like what we do is, at the beginning of the year, we don't have some of those one-time revenues. We hope that we can find some additional cost savings in there. So what we're able to do is to budget expenses in excess of our revenues at the beginning of the year in order to try and save some of those programs at the beginning of the year. And then sort of as we go through the year, we've been able to kind of eke back and it looks like on the Second Amendment, we're almost about to break even.
Correct.
Okay. And I've had some questions from community members of, you know, we've got all this, you know, we have $4 million to spend and I was wondering if you could just help us with, if we decided at some point that we were going to move forward and utilize that fund balance, what that would mean for going into the next year, seeing that right now we eat into that fund balance at the beginning of the year, hoping that we're going to be able to sort of scratch our way back to a relatively break-even position, that if we decided to go ahead and spend that fund balance during the current fiscal year, how that would then affect the next fiscal year that we're coming up to and what those reductions in budget figures are needing to find additional expenses to cut, how that would look going into the beginning of the school year, knowing that we are not allowed to go into a deficit situation, which means if we broke even when we did our first budget amendment, we would not be able to show a negative $2.5 million in fund balance and then work our way back to a zero fund balance.
Yeah, I think you've done a really good job explaining it. I think that a couple of key points are, one is that you can't adopt a deficit fund balance. That's not allowed by state law. Now, we hear about deficit districts, but what they have to do is enter into an agreement with the state of Michigan and the Department of Treasury to fix that. So by law, you can't adopt that, so districts do what they have to do to try and get by. But as you know, then what would happen at the end of the year if they don't meet whatever targets that they had set, they would be in deficit. So it certainly is not something that Livonia Public Schools would do, which would be go into deficit.
Correct.
So looking at this budget, so we have to make some assumptions about going forward. Couple of things just to keep in mind. One, you'll recall, this budget has $1.9 million adopted of one-time funds. So you'll recall, that was the sale of property for $1 million, which we have not yet closed on, we're hoping to very shortly. $900,000 on the perpetual easement at Stevenson High School for the cell tower, we did close on that. We have received those funds. And now this $856,000 that we've received from RISA. So when you look at that, first thing we have to do in adopting next year's budget is take all of those one-times revenues right out. They're gone. So we have to start, number one, with that difference in revenue. Number two, we have to look at our enrollment trends. If those continue to look down, then we have to say, you know, if it's 300 students at $8,000 a student, that's almost $2.5 million. So that's another revenue source. We have seen from the governor's executive proposal, an increase in the foundation allowance of $60 per student. So that, of course, still has to go through the House and through the Senate committees and come out. And hopefully, if that does, that would be the largest increase in foundation. That won't cover the difference in our loss of enrollment, assuming that that's what our trend analysis shows as we move forward with that study. So that right there. Our increases in other costs such as healthcare are around 3%. Other costs have been fairly stagnant. I mean, as we saw, the utilities have been good, fuel has been good, so that's good news. The trend for tax write-offs were very high the first several years after 2008 crash. Those are starting to come down and get more flat as they used to be prior to 2008. But I think, if I've answered your question, the big thing is we're starting with significant revenue reductions. So as soon as those come off and we look at that, and we've seen a couple of different numbers that we've shared publicly, I mean, we probably have, I don't want to use numbers right now, as we move forward, we'll update the board with that, but there could be several million dollars of budget reductions or revenue enhancements or other ways in order to meet that gap. You know, one of the things we've tried to do in the years that we've had declining enrollment and very little increases from the state aid, is to use a little bit of fund balance every year, is, you know, trying to get the revenue and expenditure difference, that surplus or deficit each year from the budget, to be as close as we can. So when you look at those lines that we've done over the years, we might, some years the revenue might be a little bit higher than expenditures, some years it might be a little bit lower, meaning we're using some fund balance. But the goal has been, as you said, to reduce the least amount of programs that we have to. We have certainly made significant cuts over the 12 years I've done this. So, you know, as you know, to the tune of $50 million and many, many jobs. So can't say that we haven't made cuts or revenue enhancements as we've gone along, but again, minimizing that from a program standpoint has been the Board of Education and the superintendent's goal as we make those budget recommendations moving forward.
Okay. Can you?
It was a long answer.
Can you indulge me in another question? So as you were speaking, you talked about the declining enrollment, which historically has been about 300 students every year, which every year is about $2.4 million. And I believe the number that we came up with at our last committee, the whole meeting, was the amount of just, I don't know, discretionary budget really isn't, anything over salaries and benefits is about $14 million, correct? Is what we have out of our $144 million?
So, right. So when you look at salaries and benefits, they're about 130 on 145 million dollar budget.
All right. And so.
About 90% of our budget.
So every year, out of that $14 million that we have left, that's a discretionary number, we're losing $2.4 million out of that $14 million, correct? So to speak.
Yeah.
Because we have certain fixed costs that we have to maintain and.
Right.
So that's a pretty high percentage of what we have to dig into and try to find $2.4 million every single year, almost.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Just one. We, and you may not know, so I'm putting you on the spot. We heard from Paul Terrio from Plant Moran that he was nearing completion with enrollment numbers. Since we were just talking enrollment numbers and it's top of mind, do you know when those might be presented to the public so they can tune in?
I think Mrs. Okus wants to answer that question.
Yes. So they are, we are meeting with Plant Moran Cressa this week and we are in the process of putting together a stakeholder group comprised of administrators, teaching staff, secretary, building supervisor, board members, and community members. And we hope to begin work with that group the week of April 11th. And so what we will do is, once we have that summary information from Plant Moran Cressa, invite them to a study session and a committee meeting to share their preliminary information, the raw data with the board. And then, as you know, that stakeholder group will continue their work through the remainder of this school year and perhaps, if necessary, you know, into the next, to make recommendations based on the enrollment study and the facility and use study.
Great. So in about a month, you'll, we'll be able to see kind of where those numbers are coming out at?
Yes. I would hope certainly within that time, if not a little sooner.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Other comments or questions from board members? For Mrs. Okus and Ms. Abby both, concerns of a deficit district, I don't know if this is necessarily even a question, but more of a comment. Excuse me. The state has mandated 5%. The recommendation is 10 to 15% fund equity. And the alternative is to go into deficit. My concern about a deficit district is for our relatively short-term and certainly long-term well-being of the district. If we were to go into a deficit district, my concern is quickly, that's publicized, we are put into a relatively small group of districts that are undesirable. I have concern about property value, about families wanting to move into a district that would be considered a deficit district and under that, under the care of the state because we're unable to manage our own finances. Are those realistic concerns?
I mean, I think that everyone has clearly, you know, an opinion about those things and I, there was certainly, I would share those opinions with you in that I don't think that the way that we would want to project ourselves in Livonia is unable to deal with the issues that we have in not being able to meet our requirements and our obligations. So I would think that certainly, you know, what you've shared with me over the years and what we have worked together on has been to make sure that we are financially solvent as a district. I think that's a very important goal for us to have. It has always been a goal in this district and I think it just makes sense. You have to get there eventually. So whether we make those recommendations now to the Board of Education or the state comes in and helps us make those recommendations, that will be really what will happen. So how that looks, having continued to have local control, I think is very important for this Board of Education and for this community. I hope I'm not overstating that, but I think that's really what we continue to maintain is local control. If we're a deficit district, then Treasury and MDE become a part of our team.
Okay. Mrs. Oakley, did you want to add anything?
No. The only thing I wanted to share with you is that we will, from this point forward through, until the time in June when we adopt the budget, continue to have significant conversation in each of our study sessions and committee meetings surrounding this. As you know, this is part of our work on a daily basis, oftentimes multiple times a day basis. So we are balancing certainly the needs of our district. We're balancing the requirements of the state as well as our advocacy efforts to assure that public education is properly funded.
And that was going to be, it leads into my, to my next statement, which is Livonia is nowhere near alone in this situation. Many districts are in a far tougher situation, but bottom line, public education is not adequately funded right now. Unfortunately, when Proposal A passed in 1993, 94, the commitment from the state was that if this passed, the state would adequately fund public education. And that went along well for a number of years, until the economy didn't go well. And at this point, public education is absolutely not being funded adequately. We, and Livonia Public Schools are doing the best we can, along with nearly every other district in the state of Michigan, with declining budgets. But I will continue to advocate to Lansing, and I will thank those who are going alongside us, continuing to advocate to Lansing, and ask the rest to join us in adequately funding public education. It's, it is one of the few true governmental responsibilities. And right now, in my opinion, from what I've been seeing over years of budgets, it's not being done well. It's not being done appropriately or adequately. The state made a commitment to adequately fund public education, and I'm calling on them to do it. And I'm calling on our entire community to continue to consistently pound Lansing that this must be funded properly for Livonia and for every other district in the state of Michigan. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? All righty. Ms. Abby, thank you very much for you and your entire department that presents, gathers all this information and presents it in a manner that can be easily understood. Thank you to our entire administrative staff, which stresses over this, as you said, Mrs. Oakley, on a rather daily basis. Right now, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, please take the role.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5C, Appointment of Auditor for the 2015-2016 Year.
President Burton.
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District appoint the firm of Plant Moran to audit and prepare the financial report for Livonia Public Schools School District for the 2015-2016 school year at a total cost of $43,500.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item for us?
Yeah, thank you very much. We are pleased to bring this recommendation to appoint Plant Moran as our auditors again this year. We are very pleased with their services. As you know, we are entering into our fifth year with Plant Moran. They are an outstanding accounting and auditing firm, well-known throughout the state of Michigan and elsewhere. Certainly the premier auditing and accounting firm for school districts in the state of Michigan. I think we have just had outstanding service from Plant Moran over the five, well, over the four years and in the past that they've been a part of our team. As you know, they not only provide the services of actually conducting the independent audit each summer, they come, their staff comes in, sits in our conference room for about two weeks with all their laptops up and ready to go and ask us for a tremendous amount of information, although I have to say it's much more of as electronic than it used to be. So they don't want my big three-ring binders anymore. We have to scan it in or send it to them electronically. But they spend a couple of weeks here, then they go off-site and spend a great deal more time going through our financial statements in detail, our trial balance, going through all of the data, do that detail, help us with the financial statements. As you know, they come to the Board of Education at least twice during that process to go through those financial statements, fund by fund, page by page, in detail for the Board of Education. In addition to that work, of course, they help us with accounting issues throughout the year. They're available. They are presenters across the state of Michigan in a variety for Board of Educations, for superintendents, for business managers, in all fields across the state of Michigan. So we are pleased to bring this to you. As you know, the $43,500 is a $1,000 increase from the prior year. They had kept their fees flat for this year and did ask for that modest increase for next year, and we do think that that's appropriate, and we would recommend that we move forward.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
So one area of auditing is missing here, and that is our bond. Can you explain the rationale there?
Yes, certainly. As the Board of Education knows, we have hired a separate, independent firm, Yo and Yo, who are also very good auditors. And they will be and have been auditing the actual bond fund separately for the district. So in a typical situation, your financial auditors would go ahead and audit the bond fund. However, because we have hired Plant Moran Cressa, that independent consulting side of Plant Moran as our owner's representative on the bond, we did take that extra, one more conservative step to say, well, Plant Moran Cressa is managing the bond, so let's not have Plant Moran, the accounting firm, actually do the audit. So Yo and Yo has done the, and will continue to do the audit on an annual basis separately from Plant Moran, and that has worked out very well. The other thing is, you can, you can have your bond funds audited at the end of the project, or you can do it on an annual basis. We talked about this when we first put the bond funds into our system, and the board agreed that it probably made the most sense to just do this on an annual basis so that you're kept up to date. You'll recall that Yo and Yo came in separately and presented the financial statements on the bond fund itself separately. So you will see them again in the fall as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5D, Approval of McKinley Vendor. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonnell?
Move that the Board of Education, based on the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, prepare contracts for Livonia Public Schools School District with Selby and Trucking and Excavating Dundee, Michigan, to demolish McKinley School for a total cost of $262,000. Also move that upon receipt of the contracts and approved payment and performance bonds, the Assistant Superintendent of Businesses authorized to sign said contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education.
Support.
I have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, you're up again.
Thank you very much. This is the second time we have brought the McKinley demolition to the Board of Education. The first vendor that the Board of Education had authorized, actually sent us a letter asking to withdraw from the project. They were unable to meet our timelines and commitments. They're a good company. They've worked for us before. We understood that they just had some misunderstandings when they put their bid together, and we did authorize their request to withdraw. So we're presenting this evening the second low bidder. We've included in your bid pack, or in your package this evening, a revised bid tabulation. So you can see, we've indicated that the other firm has withdrawn their bid, and we're recommending the second low vendor to meet our specifications.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. McDonnell.
Thank you. Ms. Abby, I'm just going to ask the question, and I know we've discussed this before, but they are going to be doing the asbestos abatement also along with this project?
Absolutely. That is part of the bid specifications to do the asbestos abatement, yes. And any other environmental issues?
Right. Okay. Thank you.
It's always a good question.
Mr. Centers?
If people are living in that neighborhood, how does this affect the timeline?
We had hoped to get it in a little bit sooner, but we will work as diligently and quickly as we can. It's, we will do all the necessary precautions that we have to, as we always have. We, you know, that is part of the issue, is that we are very careful about who we hire so that they do meet all of the specifications and can meet our timelines. So they're ready to get started.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Abby, let's see, this is, I think we're spending $262,000 on this. Can you maybe talk for just a second about how this is from the sinking fund and what the difference between the sinking fund dollars and the operational dollars are, and where this money can come from in order to fund this project?
This is a sinking fund project. Thank you very much. So the sinking fund is a source of fund, capital projects funds that can only be used for the repair and maintenance of our buildings. This is approved by the voters. It's one mil on our property, 1.12 mils on our property that levies about $4.5 million a year. Typically, the type of projects that we've done over the past 20 years are everything from our water mains to upgrading boilers, to repairing roofs, to updating our heating systems. Big projects we typically see in the summer are our paving and parking lot projects. As you know, this money can only be used for those. It cannot be used for salaries or benefits or in our general fund. It isn't used to supplant our general fund in any way. It's really a resource for the district to help with the overall maintenance of the 3 million square feet of plant that we have in Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. McDonnell?
Thank you. Ms. Abby, in reference to Plant Moran Cressa, being that they oversee our sinking fund projects and the funds, I'm assuming they're going to oversee this project also?
They are as well, yes.
Awesome.
You'll be seeing a lot more of their interest in our sinking fund projects as we move forward for the summer.
All right, great. Thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board? If you're, if you've been following the board quite a bit, you'll know this already. But if you have not followed in the more recent few months, this, McKinley is being taken down, and that land will be accessible for the use by Franklin High School and by the community.
Correct.
That is the intention of that land. Franklin has been landlocked and in dire need of extra space for many, many years. And this is one way to take down McKinley and help answer Franklin's needs also. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6A, Expulsion of a Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District expel one Churchill High School student, grade 12, for serious violations of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education's policy.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mr. Archibald, would you like to address this item for us?
Thank you, Mr. Burton. We had a disciplinary hearing in early February for an offense requiring a mandatory expulsion under the revised school code, hence the recommendation before you. This student is eligible to participate in the Graduation Alliance program, and currently there is a plan in place for this student to earn their remaining credits for graduation through that online program.
Are there any questions or comments by the board?
I just want to thank Mr. Archibald and the continued concern over our kids that, you know, may make interesting-
Errors in judgment?
Errors in judgment, and that we continue to keep those kids on the right track as much as possible with their education, get them to graduate, and really keep them as part, as much a part of our community, as our LPS community as we can. So thank you very much for those efforts. Those families, I'm sure, depend on you and are very appreciative.
Any other comments? Mr. Centers?
I just want to also say that for those people watching, we each individually have addressed, heard the situation from Mr. Archibald, that this is not the first time we've heard of this situation. And, you know, the administration here has done their due diligence in this situation. So thank you for the time spent with it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7A, under Personnel Matters, Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Teresa Jackson, effective date February 22, 2016.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes, thank you. Employees are entitled to request and be granted leaves of absence under the terms of their collective bargaining agreement. Therefore, administration recommends approval of the leave of absence.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 7B, Resignations, and there is no motion here. This is just for the board's information only. Is that correct, Mrs. Oakley?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is 7C, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Carolyn Derry, Mary Jo Keller, Tricia Mitchell, Geraldine Yarborough. Support.
Oops, missed a chorus there. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, thank you. These four employees have a total combined service of approximately 92 years. On behalf of administration, we'd certainly like to thank these employees for their loyal and dedicated service of nearly a century to the Livonia Public Schools. And we recommend that the board adopt the resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Congratulations. As Mr. Winry said, we thank these employees for their service, and we congratulate them as they start the next chapter of their lives. It's got to be very exciting. Any other questions or comments from the board? We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is item 8 reports from the superintendent. Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you so much, President Burton. So, we could look at this one of two ways. We haven't had a, a board meeting in six weeks.
Wow.
Or there is a lot to be proud of in Livonia Public Schools, but I have a number of items. So, I will, uh, I will move through those this evening. Um, okay, thank you. A number of items on which to update the community this evening and all of you. Alrighty. Um, first of all, and you may have seen this publicly, this information shared already, but we wanted to be sure the community knew, um, that we've conducted, um, the water testing at each of our sites. Um, we know that, uh, certainly in the news, um, uh, both in, uh, Flint and in, in surrounding areas, um, we see, we know that, um, our community members and staff, um, all, I believe, were appreciative of the water sampling. We conducted testing across 30 LPS sites, um, 101 samples, and there were no issues with any of our locations, and no further action was needed. We'd like to thank Arch Environmental Group, uh, who came out and did the testing, and Mr. Harry Lau and Wayne Roberts, who assisted with that. Um, we were very pleased to share that with the community and, um, to have that confidence moving forward. Um, I have a number of musical highlights to share with you this evening. Uh, Mr. Michael Reyes from Frost Middle School shared with us, uh, that this evening, our students are participating in a very special event. Eighteen of our Frost Band students were selected, um, to come together with students from Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County to create a special band for a day. Uh, the ensemble worked with members of the Detroit Symphony, um, in an intense one-day clinic today, and, uh, were performing this evening at Orchestra Hall at 6:30 PM. Um, and so, that was, uh, a lot of excitement for our seventh and eighth grade students, and we are very proud to have them represented, um, at Orchestra Hall this evening. Um, also, we received an update from Mr. Byron Turner and Ms. Heather Wickman regarding the state vocal solo and ensemble, um, results from this weekend. Um, our, our students participated, um, in the Vocal Music State Solo and Ensemble Festival, and all of Stevenson's events earned a medal, with a number of students earning Division One ratings, um, as well as the Village Singers, and six individual students receiving a perfect score in sight reading.
Wow.
A significant accomplishment. Um, also, um, this past weekend, we had 19 events from the Stevenson High School Instrumental Music Department participate in the festival. Um, in order to, uh, participate in the festival, the, um, events needed to receive a one in district competition back in January. So, it was outstanding that we had 19 events from Stevenson participating. Sixteen of them went on to receive a one at this state festival. So, kudos and congratulations to them. Um, we also have, had a number of state final athletic celebrations, in addition to Nathan Aitzenza, who we acknowledged here this evening as a state wrestle, wrestling champ. We have three more state champs that we will be bringing to us next month. That's pretty special. Uh, it is no small feat to accomplish that. We have Jackson O'Dowd, um, from Stevenson High School in the 50 Free, who will be coming to us as a state champ, champ in swimming. Brianna Rhodes, all-around state champ for gymnastics, and Jessica Week on the uneven bars. Um, as well as the coach for the Livonia Blue Gymnastics, um, was named Coach of the Year for the State of Michigan.
Wow.
So, they will all be joining us, um, in, uh, April. Right, Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, we're excited for that. Um, we'd also like to, um, congratulate the Stevenson Hockey Team that made it to the state finals game for the third time in four years, another significant feat. Um, so they are state, uh, runners-up as well. Um, and so, we are proud of all of our student athletes who continue to move on to this high level of competition. Um, kudos, I know some of you, um, joined in the fun as well this weekend. The Franklin Players put on an absolutely fantastic, um, production of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. Um, they were absolutely remarkable. Um, I believe there were almost 50 students participating. And yesterday, um, I had the pleasure of attending, and it was actually, they recognized for the group the final performance to take place in the Franklin Auditorium ever.
Wow.
And so, there were, it was very nice to meet, actually, some Franklin alumni who were there in the crowd, who were previous, um, stage performers, and they were back for the final performance. So, it was quite a special evening, um, and, uh, the students were remarkable. Um, I'd like to highlight a couple of important things coming up this week. Lest you think we're already on spring break, we are not. Uh, tomorrow night, I, I truly encourage our community out there, um, to join us for an outstanding event that's put on every year. It's the Parent Fair. Um, it's held at Stevenson High School, but it's for the entire district. There will be parent, parent, uh, discussion panels, and I'd like to just cover, cover a couple of those topics because I think that they are so important. Um, there's going to be a preschool panel, lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, and high school. The topics of the discussion will include self-esteem, mood, safe use of technology, bullying, attention and impulse control, how to be a better student, handle peer pressure, substance abuse, setting limits, giving consequences, regaining control as a parent, planning for after-high school, and athletics and fitness. Um, I don't think we can ever do enough to support the social and emotional well-being of our students, and, uh, we have, uh, literally dozens of staff, teachers, service providers, and administrators who will be serving on these panels. Again, it is free of charge. Um, it is in the Stevenson Auditorium at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening, open to our entire Livonia community. I encourage you, uh, to, to join us. Um, on March 23rd, we have a district-wide string fling, just the way to kick off, uh, the season of spring. We will have over 400 students from all of our Livonia schools, grade six through 12, performing on the violin, viola, cello, and, um, I believe...
String bass.
We have, oh, it's string bass. How could I have forgotten the string bass?
[laughing]
And I believe, uh, we have a special, uh, guest, President Burton, who will be a guest conductor that evening. So, we look forward to that. And then finally, I don't think I could do a better job than my former Hoover Rockets, Joey Galinski, and Maya Constantino did this evening, letting you know about the, uh, Livonia Warriors competition. Uh, really excited again to be a host, uh, site for that competition. Over 40 high schools, um, will be participating. That is next Friday and Saturday at Churchill High School, free of charge, but bring a little money because the concessions are pretty terrific, and I heard there's a pancake breakfast on Friday.
Ooh.
Um, so, we wish our Livonia Warriors, um, and Draco, um, a great competition. And to, um, wrap it up this evening, I'd like to share with you a special video. Um, we shared this at our Professional Development Day, and, um, you will, I believe, enjoy very much hearing from our LPS students, from preschool to post-secondary, highlighting the many ways in which our staff impact and inspire our students. So, I invite you to join me, um, in, in reveling in the message from these students.
Well, it's really fun to learn new things. Teachers protect you a lot. They take really good care of you.
Really letting me know what road I wanna go down and, like, what I wanna do in my life.
And I like to see that they get excited to see me.
They're there to help you, to inspire you.
I never really wanted to do my homework because I didn't feel like I was smart enough to do it, and then she kinda convinced me that I was.
I've become more, like, social and less shy. Like, I used to be, like, I used to, like, not talk to anybody. I've kinda grown more confident in talking to people and being more social.
Just like if you ask them a question, you, you don't feel dumb when you ask it, and they make you feel like they actually, like, are concerned with what you have to say.
I was kinda nervous at first, but, because, like, I don't know, like, who's in my class, but once I found out, like, who's in my class, it was, like, a lot of people from last year that I know, and we played, so I, I was fine.
I feel like I'm more outgoing. Um, I'm more willing to do stuff that scares me.
I like to write about scary stories and just things that have happened in my life.
Cutting, doing, writing your name.
Just finished writing a comic book script as our final, and that was pretty interesting because we've never done something like that before.
But in every soul I have, we have to forget about the problems, the rumors, to forget everything.
We, like, do crafts, and we, like, read the chap, like, chapters from James and the Giant Peach.
I feel like there's plenty of opportunities, if, for any student to express anything they wanna express.
If you can think of it, you can create it.
I would say there's a lot of, um, involvement here. There's a lot of leadership roles.
I'm a part of council and senate, so I like to help the school and...
We have a lot of clubs, and sports are a big thing, too.
I'm a door monitor captain, and I've been in student council. I've been in drama club.
Robotics club, and there's a chemistry club, I think. Um, there's a skiing club as well.
I like being leader. It makes me feel really important.
We made a big, um, bottle cap mural. Leadership Day, we got to present that to the mayor. We got to, of Westland, and we got to take a picture with him, and now it's on the website.
We have a lot of people that can go to each other, students and stuff like that.
They've taught me to work in a group and contribute my own ideas to that group.
Just this week, we actually went and met up at a restaurant and studied for finals and stuff like that, and we all help each other out.
Um, they try to keep their eyes on everybody in the hallways and everything. Watch out for bullying. They always tell us, if someone says something, go to a teacher.
I feel safe here. People who are there to help us to watch and help you grow.
We help out the peers that have, like, a disability. Writing activities, like, we did a haiku poem, and then we're planning for an art therapy.
They helped me learn to read and write. And my hairdo, look.
Do you do zoophonics? How do you do zoophonics?
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's really kind, and nobody, um, picks on each other just because someone's short, or their religion, or how the way they look.
He basically just brought out my love of physics and science and math.
Personally, I love maths, math, and I just do it every day, and I enjoy it.
I don't like recess because it's just, like, taken away from your time of learning.
And science is really fun. We have a fun time laughing.
Uh, what were the Dyson numbers?
The numbers.
I hope you write it on pencil.
I wanna learn new things, arms, read newer books, and write more stories.
I wanna go to college and learn everything.
They've got a home-ish environment in their classroom.
After school, he calls me by my first name. He knows everyone in this class. Uh, he goes around, see if anyone has any problems, and...
When I go into a classroom, like, she knows everyone, and she knows, like, what your struggles are and stuff. So, it's easy to, like, talk to her and...
He also teaches elementary school kids, so anytime that we're, uh, not listening, he likes to sing his directions at us or yell them in a high-pitched voice.
When I'm talking to him, it feels like I'm talking to a friend. Like, he can actually understand what I'm talking about and stuff.
I think when teachers, teachers tell personal stories that relate to the subject matter, I think it really helps the kids learning because they're interested, and they get to see what the teacher does outside of the class.
It carries that you understand and stuff, not that you're, like, the best at it, but that you understand it.
She explained everything, like, twice and three times.
Well, the lunch ladies know me, and they have a wrap ready for me, even if it's not the week that they have that wrap. I keep it in the fridge. I'm like, oh, there's Sam, get his wrap.
Everybody is so outgoing and so, like, happy, and just, they're doing what they want.
So, I know you know how special our staff is, and we wanted to make sure the community did as well. So, that's it for this evening, President Burton, thank you.
Thank you. The, the video really, to me, as, as I was watching it, and this is the first time that, that the board has seen this video. The staff has seen it, uh, at the President, uh, Professional Development Day just a few weeks ago. Uh, but, to me, that highlighted the, the reason that we put our kids in Livonia Public Schools, which is to have unending opportunities. Uh, when we moved into Livonia Public Schools, we only had two of our three kids, and our third was but a hope. We didn't have any idea what all of their needs would be. Uh, but to see so many different, enormously varied, uh, opportunities for students in Livonia Public Schools, that video is, is, is why we, why we came to Livonia Public Schools. And to have staff and students be mutually respected and mutually inspired, uh, I thank you to our staff, and, and there are a number of them who are still with us in our audience this evening. Uh, thank you so much for what you do for our students every day. Uh, the next item on our agenda is item nine, hearing from board members. Uh, item 9A is the second reading of board policy, G-A-A-A, which is not nearly as exciting as our video, but it's work that we must do. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following, G-A-A-A, non-discrimination.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item for the board?
I will. I will actually ask, uh, Mr. Archibald, um, to do so. He shared this at length, um, at our study session, study session and committee meeting, and the impetus for, um, reviewing these policies. And he'll just, again, we know this is a second reading, so he'll just review that briefly this evening for us.
And again, this, uh, policy, the only change is to substitute, uh, in the second paragraph, uh, the title is that what, it did read Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, and to replace that with Director of Human Resources.
Alrighty. Are there any questions or comments? Again, as Mrs. Oakley said, these have been gone over, these, these next coming policies have been gone over a number of times, but any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, we, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item is item 9B, second reading of board policy, J-A-B, non-discrimination on the basis of handicap, section 504. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following, G-A-B, non-discrimination on the basis of handicap, section 504.
Support. We have a mo, uh, motion by Mrs., Mr. Centers, uh, supported by Mrs. Laura. And, uh, I, Mr. Centers, I believe you said G-A-B. If I'm not mistaken, it is J-A-B.
J-A-B, apologize, thank you.
J-A-B, correction on that. Um, and Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
Yes, again, I'll have either Dr. Terrell or Mr. Archibald, um, briefly speak to, um, again, the impetus for making these changes, the review that we had in the fall, and the specific change for this policy.
And again, the changes here are, are quite straightforward. In paragraph five, uh, in two locations in that paragraph, it replaces a title of Assistant Superintendent for Personnel with the title Director of Student Services.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Laura. Uh, Mrs. Bonnefield, may, uh, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mrs. Burton, uh, President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Uh, the next item is item 9C, second read of, reading of board policy, J-G-I, suspected student abuse and neglect. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following, J-G-I, suspected student abuse and neglect.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by a few, but I believe the first one I heard was Mrs. Bonnefield. Uh, Mrs. Oakley, are you addressing this, or, uh, we'll, we'll start off with you. You can, you can pass it on if you'd like.
Certainly. Um, as you may recall, we had, um, the, the policy, um, J-G-I included, um, some necessary updates, both for demographic and contact information. Um, you'll see here this evening, and I believe Dr. Terrell will speak briefly to the policy. Um, and then also, as you, um, may recall, we had administrative procedures and exhibits that accompany this policy, um, which are not items on which the Board of Education votes. Um, again, we reviewed those at the study session, and again, at the committee meeting. Um, those changes will be entered into the record and be uploaded as part of, um, our overall board policy book. Um, the only thing on which, uh, Dr. Terrell will be speaking and you'll be voting this evening is the actual policy itself, um, as per, um, our board practice.
The policy additions that we have talked about are changing some of the names of the welfare agencies that the, um, we, our staff report to, as well as adding the Social Welfare Act, where we wanted to, um, add the inclusion of vulnerable adults, as our Western Wayne Skill Center, um, provides an education for students 18 to 26. So, the Social Welfare Act includes vulnerable adults.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 9D, second reading of board policy... Second Reading of Board Policy, B-H-A, Code of Ethics. And Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
I would. As you know, the board has worked diligently over the past number of meetings. This is our second reading. But the Board Policy Code of Ethics, B-H-A, has been reviewed in a number of study sessions and committee meetings. We reviewed each element of the language. And I'd like to just take a moment to commend our Board of Education. Just recently, it was requested by a couple of neighboring districts. I had been asked if we had information regarding Board Operating Procedures to share with neighboring districts who have new board members coming on board. I was not only able to share with them the Board Operating Procedures on which the board has worked very hard over the past number of years, but also this document, which I feel, which I certainly commend our Board of Education for their commitment to this Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics delineates the behaviors and the way in which we will do business as part of our, as part of our team that represents Livonia Public Schools so admirably. So I would, once again, would just like to take just a moment to thank the Board of Education for their commitment to our students, to our staff, to our community, and certainly their commitment to working hard to create a Code of Ethics for themselves, you know, by which to work and make deliberations each and every week. So thank you so much for your care and commitment to each of you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on this item, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, B-H-A, Code of Ethics.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there questions or comments from the Board of Education? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. This evening, I would like to let my fellow board members know that I will not be citing the Code of Ethics this year, only from my concern and reference to the Board Operating Procedure, which indicates that the majority of the board has to be in agreement before any board member can receive any financial documents or invoices. And not that I don't believe that having, I do believe in having a Code of Ethics. I think it's important to have rules. It keeps everybody all on the same page. But I still feel very strongly in reference to that section of the Board Operating Procedure. And I know it's a living, breathing document, which we've had many, many conversations about. And if there's any way that this board can, in the future, continue to have conversation in reference to that portion of our Board Operating Procedure, then I would be more than willing to sign the document. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from other board members? Mr. Johnson?
President Burton, thank you. Quite honestly, I don't know really how one affects the other. One of the things that we do as a board is we act as a board. We don't act individually. And not one single individual on this board has the right to go to any staff member and ask them to put together documentation or reports for us that, if that happened, then they could take direction from seven individual board members. And that's not the way we operate. We operate as a group. And we have a procedure that if documents or some other information is requested, then if that was my idea and I wanted to get some documentation, then I would have to convince three of my colleagues that that information is necessary to bring to the entire board, not to one single individual. And that's the way we operate here as a board. And I don't see how that Board Operating Procedure in any way really affects the Code of Ethics. This is the way that we operate. Plus, there are 25 bullet points under our Code of Ethics. And to simply have one item that may be in the Board Procedures, hold up your signature on this, I don't quite understand it.
Are there questions or comments from other board members? Mr. Centers and Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just, I'm happy to support the Code of Ethics. I think, you know, I've put a lot of time into learning procedures from Michigan Association of School Boards, from RISA, Clark Hill, whenever we get opportunities to be trained. I think this Code of Ethics is very much in line. And in fact, I think it's really a model for other districts. A lot of people have spent, on this board, have spent a lot of time on this, you know, including myself, and I'm proud to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I would just, I guess, maybe make a statement of clarification. I don't see at any point in time where I've ever been refused or asked not to get any kind of financial information. I think the administration is very forthcoming with everything that we ask. And I believe that we exemplify in every single meeting that if we talk and discuss about information and information that we need, that as a group and as a whole, we are provided every item that we are asked for, probably beyond what would normally be expected. That the administration goes at great lengths to make sure we have more than adequate information. And I think it's misleading to make the statement that we perhaps are not allowed, for some reason, to not get that information. I don't see that we have any restrictions other than we operate as a board and we expect each and every person to operate as a seven-member board. And, you know, I'm not one for witch hunts. So I think we need to operate as a group, make sure that everybody's on board. And I don't feel that I've ever been denied any information that we've requested.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. While I recognize the opportunity for people to choose whether or not to sign this particular document, the Code of Ethics, it's not something that's only going to be looked at tonight. It's something that will be approached by anybody, anywhere, at any time. And we won't necessarily have someone there to explain the reasoning behind an absence of a signature. And I ask that my esteemed colleague consider that so that you're not open to misinterpretation.
Any other comments from the board?
I do have a question. I know, and thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, for that point. Would possible consideration would, for this board, to relook at that line of the Board Operating Procedures, which indicates maybe some fine tuning on that section in reference to how we proceed and asking for documents? Maybe with that consideration, maybe I would change my position on this. And yes, I do understand that. And like I said, I do not disagree with the items that are written in the Code of Ethics. That is not my objection to it at all. It's our procedures. We really, you know, since last year, since we've developed our Board Operating Procedures in reference to that, it's not been something, well, let's see, I asked for the trial balance, and that didn't work out. And after that, I just, I pretty much stopped asking. And I just feel strongly that, yes, we do operate as a board. We do operate together. Because, you know, we've had many discussions in reference to how we get things done. Because it cannot just be one individual, and I understand that. I do feel that things have been much improved in reference to our board and the finances. I think our procedures and oversight is much improved over the last few years. But I think we need to reevaluate that section. And, you know, we have a response. I feel we have a responsibility as a whole to ensure that the finances are, you know, overlooked by all of us. So if, going forward, if we can have commitment, maybe at the next subcommittee to review that, tonight I would change my position in reference to signing the Code of Ethics. But I just feel strongly it's something that we need to hone up. Because right now, the way it's written, it's not a very smooth transition in reference to asking for the documents, how we go about it. It has to be the majority of us. And it's been based on, the last time that we did it, was based on consensus. So if I can possibly, you know, have at least one other board member support me in bringing this as an agenda item to review that document, then I too will change my position in reference to that and sign it tonight. And yes, you're right, Mrs. Jarvis. It will, it's just not, nobody is going to understand why I didn't sign it. However, I feel strongly enough that that particular item is enough to stop me from signing it.
Just as a note to the public, and then we can go on with others' comments also, this particular item was discussed at a minimum of three meetings last year. This specific item that you're asking about was discussed at at least three meetings this year. We asked you to bring alternative wording that you would have liked in its place, which was also discussed at a meeting. I want to make it very, very clear that we are discussing this item at great, great length. But bottom line, the alternative wording that you suggested, Mrs. McDonnell, still had one person being able to direct staff to do work, to create reports, or to provide paperwork for you. Just so that the public is understanding very, very clearly, our Board Operating Procedures state that every board member has an opportunity and an obligation to ask any questions they have at any time and can be expected to have answers to those questions. That is not what we are talking about here. What we're talking about is the request to provide documentation that is above and beyond what the board should be expected to receive in order to do their work, to ask for additional information. Specifically, Mrs. McDonnell, it's been a request of years in the past to ask for the invoices and the fronts and backs of checks. And when you ask, when you ask for that, what we did was we established a procedure. So that could be, procedure could be used for any board member. If there was any item that had a question on it, that it would be brought not just to the board member's attention for their review, but rather, it would, that specific item would go to our auditor, where an independent, unbiased auditor would review those items specifically and report back to the entire board. I want it made very, very clear. Questions and answers in writing are said to be available to any board member at any time. This is only pertaining to an individual board member directing staff to do additional work for that one board member. And with all due respect, that request is simply illegal. The, in the Revised School Code, board members have no authority other than when they are acting together. Any one of us as an individual simply does not have the legal authority to go to our administration and direct them to do work of any sort. However, we do have authority when we act together as a board. And if the majority of the board wants work done, then frankly, it doesn't matter if it's reasonable or unreasonable. If the majority of the board wants that work done, that work needs to be done. But individually, we don't have the right to direct our staff to do work. Answers are, to answer our questions, if we have questions, we are directed to the superintendent. She has also allowed us to direct our questions to the cabinet directly. Questions and answers, anytime. Doing extra work, we have to go to the board to have our staff do work. Or as, as Mr. Johnson, I believe, stated, we could have seven individuals sending our staff in seven different directions to do work, and that's simply not allowed under law. It just, it just isn't. We have in Board Operating Procedures given very clear direction on provisions for how we will go about getting additional information if we want it done. We're not saying we can't have additional information. We're just saying we have to follow a procedure. And quite frankly, Mrs. McDonnell, I'm concerned because two out of the last three years, you've chosen not to sign the Code of Ethics for various reasons. And therefore, I'm reluctant to change language that we have addressed at least six times over the last two years in order to get you to sign it, because we've done that in the past and you haven't signed it anyway. And that's frustrating as a board member. Would we address this again? Absolutely. We address the entire Board Operating Procedure and the entire Code of Ethics every year. But as far as addressing it again at the next meeting, I particularly am not interested in doing that because we've done it three times in the last month and a half or so already and have asked for additional language that we simply haven't gotten. Other questions or comments from other board members?
Yeah, I mean, it is, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
As the policy chair, I am happy to accept any alternate wording at any time for any policy change. And then as a board, we can determine at that point how we want to proceed with those language changes. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's up to every board member if they choose to provide alternate wording to any policy. That is our right as a board member to do so.
It absolutely is. And for the benefit of the public, the board knows this, but for the benefit of the public, for our previous three meetings, we've asked for exactly that. So please, please understand that that has been asked for. If any board member had questions or alternative wording on Code of Ethics or Board Operating Procedures, we have asked that we bring it forward and look at the alternative wording. And the only alternative wording that was brought forward still had the provision that an individual board member had the right to request documentation and work out of the staff, which simply is illegal. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. Just as a board member, when I work with my colleagues on this board, it's very helpful to follow established procedure and to understand, before something happens, how it will unfold, to know what the steps will be, and to be consistent in those procedures. We strive to establish our policies and procedures in compliance with the Michigan Revised School Code. And that tells us, it directs our actions, but it directs also the way those actions evolve so that we know what is likely to be the outcome of a given action. When we have one policy that deviates from those procedures, it makes it difficult to function because we don't understand ahead of time how that's going to evolve. If one person is able to take action or make a request and direct another action without the rest of the board understanding that, then that discrepancy between the School Code and the activities of the board leaves the rest of the board at a disadvantage. And I would recommend that we try to remain consistent in all of our policies. In everything we do, we act as a board. And everything we do requires a majority of action to make that board action legitimate. We can't have one policy that deviates from that form.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 9E of approval for a board member to take M A S B classes. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the participation of Board Trustee Liz Jarvis in M A S B certification classes, CBA 105 Curriculum and Instruction, CBA 106 Community Relations Leadership, and CBA 107 Labor Relations, for a total cost of $280.
Support.
We had a course over there. I couldn't tell who was supporting it. Mrs. Jarvis, was that you?
We'll let Dan do it.
Okeydoke. Mr. Centers? All righty. Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item for the fourth?
Certainly. I'll just briefly remind the board that this fall, we passed a policy that required that a board member obtain approval prior to taking these classes. We certainly know that our board trustees are encouraged to participate, and we are so pleased that Mrs. Jarvis will be embarking on enrollment in these three courses. But again, per our board policy, it's required that we have approval prior to either registering or providing reimbursement for the M A S B classes.
All righty. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just thank you, Liz, for getting trained and really making the effort to understand all your duties.
For the benefit of the public, the board knows very, very well what we're talking about with M A S B classes, but for the benefit of the public who may not all be aware, the M A S B, Michigan Association of School Boards, provides extensive training for school board members because none of us are born being one. And yet, we have some very, very significant responsibilities. The, there are nine, what they call the 100 level classes, which cover all of the basic areas of service of a school board member. And before you get your hands around $144 million budget, I certainly hope that all of us are trained and become trained as quickly as possible. This board feels strongly enough about that, that we've written into our policy, I'm sorry, into our policy to take advantage of such training and into our board operating procedures to complete these classes within the first 18 months of your service on the board. The classes are, cover such things as curriculum instruction, school law, school finance. There are nine different courses. After those are completed, there are also dozens of other courses to continue your education professionally as a board member, but those are considered very basic core classes. Again, I, like Mr. Centers, I thank Mrs. Jarvis for getting those taken care of. Also like to commend Mr. Centers, who will be recognized at a future meeting when all the documentation comes through, but he recently completed his board level certification. Yes, so we have--
Another certified--
Another red dot. Exactly, yes, we do. And it's something we take very seriously. So many, many of our board members are certified, and it's something that's very, it's very important to take care of, and we appreciate that. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 9F, hearing from board members. What our board has gone to over the last few years, rather than having seven of us repeat thank yous to everybody, in interest of everyone's time and attention, we have appointed an individual at each given board meeting to take care of a lot of thank yous for us on behalf of the board, after which certainly any other board members welcome to add anything that they would like to in hearing from board members. And tonight, Mrs. Bonfield is going to take care of that for us.
Okay. Thank you, President Burton. The first shout out goes to our art gallery students from Holmes Middle School. Leo Greco, Grace Kirkpatrick, Megan Lekatos, Jenna Melis, and Juliana Williams. They had provided us with some fantastic artwork, and we appreciate them taking the time to come and join us at the meeting. Not only do we love to see their artwork, but we also love to see the students behind the artwork and get to see them and meet them and talk to them. We wanted to congratulate Terry Rentes for her golden apple. Terry is a volunteer extraordinaire, and we are so glad that she can be a part of our LPS community. Recognition goes out to our wrestling state champion, Nathan Adienza, from Franklin High School. Many records go along with that wrestling championship, and just a really a sharp gentleman. And so glad that he could come and share his accomplishments with him, as well as his coach and his mom and the support team that he has, and just a glowing example of the kind of kids that we have in our district. Just a fantastic gentleman. Thank you to Mary McDonald for talking to us about the peer connections classes that they've started and, correct me if I'm wrong, where the mainstream kids are paired up, peer relations with some of our children that are on the autism spectrum. And it's a great, it's really a great program, and so much is learned from the kids on both sides. And I think we go, we try really hard to make sure that all the kids work together as a team and work with each other, and it just makes for a great community when everyone is included and their friends and they, just even from the video we saw tonight, just the kids, everybody just loves it. They think it's great. And they're just, they're, again, a group of outstanding kids. We provided a resolution to Priscilla David for Read Across America. March is Reading Month, so get out there and read, read, read. I know many of central office staff and board members and a lot of the service groups in the community, some other officials in the community get together and go out to the different schools and read. And the kids think it's great. The kids are really awesome. They just, they sit and they're just really attentive and really just enjoy it every time. I'm going to skip over the robotics team so that Mrs. Jarvis can give us all the nitty gritty on that. Mr. Grisbeck was here talking to us about advocacy, advocacy, advocacy. Please go on to the PTA, PTSA website. There are links. There are a lot of different options for getting hold of your legislators and letting them know that the situation with public education funding is unacceptable. And we need to do a lot to make public education a priority in the state of Michigan. And I think with a lot of the stuff that's going on in the state, education, we lose sight of the importance of education and what that means as a basis to our community. And when we talk about, you know, losing people from the state of Michigan, or the birth rate declining because of the economy, or any of those items, the basis is if we can educate everyone in our community and give them a fair and equal chance to learn and grow and become a contributing member to our society, that education, education is how we're going to change the world and make it a better place. And if we continue to ignore the fact that education needs appropriate funding, that there will be sad circumstances and the fallout will be so much worse than anyone can ever predict. That's my soapbox on that. We had a couple other great things going on. We had some employees that retired, jealous. Carolyn Derry, Mary Jo Keller, Patricia Mitchell, and Jerilyn Yarborough, congratulations. Between them, almost 100 years of service. Amazing people in an amazing district. And as sad as we are to see them go, we're happy that they get to move on and head off to new adventures. And so, I think I'm going to leave it at that.
All right.
Thank you for everyone that was here tonight.
A lot of things to celebrate this evening.
We did.
Are there any other board members who would like to add anything this evening? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. It occurs to me, if we had those retirees each stay another two years, we could have an even 100.
Oh, yeah. Good.
But I don't think they would agree to that.
We're going to convince them, no?
Well, since I was voluntold to talk about robotics, I'll talk about robotics. You know, if you're not going anywhere over spring break, have I got a deal for you. Come on down to Churchill and cheer these kids on. They do amazing things. And I'm going to send out a personal invitation to anybody whose school has a makerspace or who has, who's a middle school with one of the FTC teams. Special invitation for you guys to come on down and see where you could end up in a couple of years. You just won't even believe it. I don't want to give it all away. The excitement is worth it. Stop on by Churchill High School Friday and Saturday.
Mrs. Jarvis, what are the hours for that event?
Opening ceremony starts at 10:30 Friday morning, and the field is so complex this year, I would tell you how late it's going to run, but it's going to run later than that.
I believe it's like, go till 6 o'clock in the evening or so?
It says 6 o'clock. I don't expect it to end on time.
Okay.
I don't want to give away everything, but it's incredibly complex and it takes an awfully long time. So come on down, hang out, and if you're bored, come and find me and tell me that you're bored. Okay, solo and ensemble. Churchill High School also sent some competitors to solo and ensemble, and they all medaled. I don't have the numbers, but it was pretty impressive. I know my favorite little guy got a one, so shout out to him. And wonderful music. I tell you what, you go walk down that hall and you're just surrounded by music. These kids are amazing. Keep playing. I'd love to hear you play. March is Reading Month. I had the opportunity to go to a lot of schools, but I have to give a special shout out to Grant. If you have not been to Grant and seen the decorations that they put up, take a little time out of your day and stop by there. I am blown away. Again, I don't want to give away the farm here, but take a few minutes and head over to Grant School. Kudos to you guys. That was amazing. And then I wanted to just wish everyone a safe break.
Mr. Centers?
Just one comment, one question. First, what, Mrs. Jarvis, why did I have to learn about the pancake breakfast from Mrs. Oakley earlier?
I talk about robotics, I don't talk about pancakes.
Oh, okay, okay. And the second is, I thank you to, I was, I too have been out to a number of schools. I want to thank the students at Roosevelt who did a very cool picture and card for me, and it came in inter-office mail, and I was pretty excited. So it was, you know, I was, they were excited to hear a story. I was really excited to see, to get the picture and card, so thank you to them.
That's good. Any other board members? Mr. Johnson?
I, again, have been to a number of the schools, and no matter what grade you're reading to, they're all engaged. They want to ask questions, and they're really something. So I want to thank all the schools that I've been to for letting me come in and read. I also want to thank Mrs. McDonald, because I know this was, this has been something that's been a sore subject for you for a long time. And I know it took a lot for you to change your vote tonight. And tonight, you put the board, the board's interest in front of your own, and I know that took a lot, and I want to thank you for that.
Welcome. Any other questions or comments from the board members?
I have just one thing to add. We've had a very full house tonight, and we have had for the last number of weeks a number of our teaching staff who have been in attendance and a number who have approached the board with their concerns about school funding and salaries and so forth. Tonight, it was very noticeable that a number, a great number of our teaching staff stayed through our business discussions to hear the nitty gritty and to hear the agonizing situation that's before the board and the district. And it's noticed that you stayed, and we actually have two more who are still in attendance with us at this hour. Yes, yes, you can lay your head down, that's okay. It is noticed. It's appreciated because school funding is a situation that's dire, no matter what angle you look at it from, and it's appreciated that we can all look at it from one another's angles and try to solve this problem collectively. Thank you. Any other board members who have any other comments? Okay, our next item is item 9F. We are, 9F is recess to close session?
G. We changed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, 9G. I apologize.
President Burton?
Yes, Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recess to closed session for consideration of written legal opinion from counsel.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, I'm sorry, by Mr. Centers. I have a different nose here, sorry. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. To recess to closed session. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Oakley? Okay.
I just wanted to note, President Burton, that we will be returning after closed session. We will be coming back down to the boardroom on air to vote on the final item on the agenda. So we will take a brief recess, go up to closed session. We will be coming back downstairs on the air to finalize the last item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are recessed, and as Mrs. Oakley said, we will return shortly. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back to the remainder of the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, March 21st, 2016. We continue with Agenda Item 9H, Separation Agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Education Association, LEA, and Diane Slavota.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, seeing none, we are going to take a roll. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have now come to the end of a very lengthy agenda for the evening. If you're still hanging in there with us, we thank you. We wish everybody a very, very safe and happy spring break, and we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.